You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I made the motion to approve the minutes on September 10th. We're giving a meeting, it's like, I don't know. I just read, and I'm not sure if Mike really did it, but it did say Mike Lewis doesn't have that meeting. Okay, I'm glad, so for example, yeah, he actually, we had a change of that. It says I was probably, of course. How hard is that? We were in that bear, and I wanted. We'll write that in the minutes, and I wouldn't amend it.
We have to be on fast, we don't see anything else.
Anything else on that?
No. Right. The people who made the regular meeting minutes of September 10th will admit. If the brand may be frozen, when they would say, aye.
Aye. I made the motion in September again, though. Especially if we're further, if you just add a few bratton from my house, and she'll be submitted. There we go.
They would say, aye, aye, aye. Right, so, but public table.
That's part of it. Just wondering, I mean, the fact was, I don't know. Looking at it, it didn't better take place as far as the last, we hear, seven weeks of last. Hey, the two, uh, mine, seven children were left. Now, we're from where, who, who got to turn that for the fact. Well, talk. What are the things you can't handle?
Especially personal issues.
Well, not even that, probably, you have, that said, really only over a year ago, that once we'd seen the board, and that never happens again, the last election, he meant maybe one of the people, so that can happen. Definitely believe that, that leads the path.
Problem nationwide, through the day. But we are aware, continuing first call of action for the figures.
So, how long, how long period, for two months? I know I'm concerned about it.
Public table, we'll move on, big, new business?
Special head permit, yeah.
I'm here for this.
Uh, this is. Rail rail advisory.
Right. I'm standing, certainly.
Actually, you're closest to the microphone than we are, believe it or not.
So is this okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That's perfect.
Okay, thanks for having me. Um, this involves the rail trails. Uh, I'll give a brief update, send some beer of what's been happening. Um, so, the Cheshire Rail Trail, as you know, runs through the east side of the town. Uh, we did some ditching culvert clearing back in May, involved three and a half miles. It's been mowed three times. Uh, with the help of Stefan and Suzanne Bingsley at the county, we were awarded an RTP grant that will be implemented in 2025, and that will lay down all the hard pack. And the six-year-old will be able to ride a bike on, so it'll be in really great shape when that happens. Um, there is a washout at Mount Huggins, and I talked to Joe Russo, and he's, he and I came up with a plan to fix it. I reviewed it with the Bureau of Trails, Sean Violet, he's okay with what we plan to do. So that'll happen probably in October, uh, to get that fixed, which should be great before we do the work next year. So we'll have the washout fixed and all the drainage issues.
Is that a little bit south of Mount Huggins?
It's just north of the North Gate. Basically, Mount, at some point in the past, the water was diverted on Mount Huggins onto the rail trail, and now it's flooding the rail trail. So now we gotta take care of, we're putting in a couple culverts to get it over the rail trail, and then go down under Route 12, and it's just. Okay?
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, as far as the Eschweelock Trail, which runs through southwest through Swansea, um, the plan is to get it mowed once before the end of the year. Uh, Bruce Bohannon is gonna work on that. Uh, we've got the washouts that happened in 2023. There's seven of them. The two most northern ones, which are north of the, north of the Eversource substation, they're actually not as severe. Uh, the Keen Snow Rider Snowmobile Club applied for ARPA money that the state made available and got awarded to fix those two. Hopefully that'll happen before the end of the year, that those are fixed. Um, as far as the other ones, from what I understand, what I've been told, DOT, the town, uh, have been talking about the most southern one, we call Crevice Canyon, because we were bought Crevice House, and it's pretty big. And basically looking at using the tap grant that we have to fund that, and well, we gotta find out some other funding to basically fix the whole thing, it's pretty massive. And I believe Boyle and Tanner is doing an estimate on what the engineering would be to fix that. I've also been told that the Bridge of Christian Hill, not historic, might be used for the washout at the Eversource substation. That's a possibility. And then we gotta figure out the remaining three that are in between, basically, the Eversource substation washout and the Crevice Canyon. There's a little three or four in there. So anyway, so progress is being made, but it still sounds like it's gonna be maybe another year or two before we actually get stuff fixed. And so that's what's happening with those. Uh, let me see, what else? Yeah. What was that?
I just wanted to see if there were any questions before you've been done.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So you tried to go with two, man, you went to give him that crap, and then the other one, I am proud. It's just awesome.
Yeah, there's a lot of different trails, it's a lot.
Visualize them, so.
Yeah.
Alrighty, uh, let's see, moving on, so, uh, from down in Westport, which is basically the South Holbrook Road Crossing down to Route 10. Uh, we did some fieldwork back in June. There was some places that were pretty washed out, pretty badly. So those got fixed, and then we've got work actually going this weekend to regrade, mow, and complete the trail from that South Holbrook Road Crossing down to Route 10. So, hopefully if that goes well, that whole section will be done, um, mowed in the next week or so. Uh, so that'll look really good. Also, back earlier in the year, Joe Russo and his crew fixed a culvert that had a hole in it, right in the middle of the trail, um, on that section of the trail. So thank Joe for that. Um, so that also got fixed. So the main reason I'm here tonight is, we've got these three crossings that go, the Eschweelock Trail goes across Matthews Road. There's three crossings, they're all very, um, short sight, line of sight, bad angles, you know, basically a safety concern there. And the, the trail committee would like to do is get three crossing signs, you know, the flashing road crossings installed there. Uh, so when riders approach, they can hit that button there, and it'll flash, and then cars will see them, it looks like somebody getting hit. So, um, we looked into the cost, I actually talked to Brett Rustnoff, who's a senior civil engineer for the city of Keene. And he said, they just put that similar type of style in at the roundabout at Walmart, where they just put that roundabout in. And he said the cost was twelve to fifteen thousand dollars installed for each one of them. So they're solar-driven, push-button activated. Uh, I believe at a meeting maybe a year ago, I was asked to look into motion detect. And I asked Brett about that, and he said the only place that they ever did it was at Keane State College on Winchester Street there. And I went and checked it out, and one of them wasn't working. So I think they're very susceptible to damage. And especially on the rail trail, where we have the snowmobilers coming through with their raiders, we got the equipment. The committee felt it was too risky to put in motion detect, so they'll just have to push button. So, and then we would have to put paint on the street, uh, for the crossing. So, we'd like to use the mast grant, um, to pay for this. And I know the town was thinking of perhaps using that for something else. And we talked about this about a year ago, and using it for this purpose. So, I'm here to lobby to use that grant to pay for these three road crossings, pedestrian bicycle road crossings, cross, the three matted road crossings for the Eschweelock. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I want to go back to the motion part. What is the main reason you wouldn't want the motion? Because I'm picturing people going by a snowmobile, so they have to get off there, then to go press the button. So they have to get off their machine to go press the button, or they're just gonna be really gonna pull up along the side and go to over and hit a button? How does that work?
They would have to push the button in order to activate the flashing lights.
Do they stop their machine, do they physically get off and go push the button?
Most likely yes. I don't know exactly where they're gonna be located versus where the snowmobile could ride, and whether they can reach out over and push the button or not.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I was just being concerned, but how many people are gonna use the button? Versus, we know what's gonna happen, the lights are gonna go on this motion. And you weigh out the fact of that it would break down more, the motion one, is that the reason you don't want to do the motion?
Correct. And the, and the one at Keane State College, one is already not working.
Yeah, because I go by those nice, you know, so that people just walk out and then they flash, right?
So, right, we're concerned about how long will they last before that's not even working, and I have nothing. And then the cost is higher, too. I think it was another four to five grand per crossing to have motion detect.
Snowmobiles are probably, I would say, the least, or are that lights though, because they are, have headlights. So vehicles more likely to see that, it's the biker or walker on the land at this time of day.
Right, right.
Where.
That makes a lot of sense.
More of you said, probably, not to say that snowmobiles couldn't use them, but I think to your point, they're not gonna get off there, we got a couple of them, so like, every kind of, yeah, probably not. Well, you use them, but you can see the headlights, so you at least put your number at the corner, you're more likely to see a light, and they probably, oh, I'm asking, well, they ask one, I think, and still go very easy.
Actually, that makes a lot more sense to me now that you've mentioned the bikers and the walkers. You know, I was just having my head just against a snowmobile, so I was focused, I'm just a snowmobile guy, but there's a lot of other activity.
Oh, yeah, runners, bikers, walkers.
Yeah, I was just curious, wouldn't, you know, this.
I, I personally don't know of any motion detect they've crossed on any rail trail in our region, anywhere.
And that's just my question.
The one in Goffstadt, which most of you have it, I've used, there's a couple crossings, and they have the ones where you press the button, and it flashes the lights, so.
So it's push button, it's not motion, right?
How many do we need?
Three. Three sets for three crosses. So about forty-five thousand. The grant, I believe, is a hundred K this year.
Up to.
Up to a hundred thousand for the, for the mast grant.
So the rub is, the board had planned on applying for the extent of the 330 sidewalk road or south road, it's helping go. So we don't really, I mean, we could submit a vote about that, but normally we don't really compete against ourselves. And that would be, we'd be looking for, you know, we wouldn't be looking for a difference between forty-five and a hundred. We're looking for, you know, a hundred, ten something, a hundred. So, I didn't want to encourage him to go for it, and either compete against ourselves, or, you know, the board said, no, he said he don't want to do that sidewalk extension, that's not a good idea. Maybe there's a way to try to find a rail trail, crossings, some other way, and continue to go the sidewalk. Or even say, no, you want to do the crossings, and believe you're on sidewalk, that's not good. But I didn't want to. I didn't want to send him off to work on something and then say, no.
Here goes.
Have you investigated any grants for either, either of those projects, other grants? Safety and creation.
Maybe they could, help there's any.
I haven't looked into any of the agreement for the crossings.
How soon do you want to have this in effect, and do you want to do that this year?
Uh, the mast grant round, the deadline, I think, is October 20th or 25th. So the idea was to submit it before the application deadline, which is end of October, third week of October.
I'm not familiar enough with the sidewalks, and you're talking about.
So it's like the side work kind of ends abruptly between Grange and the local school, kind of cross from town hall, that goes into the cover bridge, go to the extended further south, towards the town hall.
And you were, you were hoping to use that money to do the sidewalk?
Actually, I don't know.
That's what we're getting. Both projects, and we buy the sidewalks. If you follow, get sidewalks in forty-five minutes.
Yes, we can, we can split the projects.
Yeah, go for a hundred. Was that side, that's because we should have split it.
Instead of going for a hundred for the sidewalk, but for fifty-five for the sidewalk, and forty-five for the sidewalk.
And do as much as we can in the sidewalk, if you're dealing with. I think that, I think the light's a great idea, because that road is crazy, and people drive fast on that road. You come around the bottom, a biker that has two kids following them, they're stopping, falling behind. I think it's important, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
You're outside.
Okay, so what, so what did I hear? I was saying, yes. Oh, okay.
So it's bigger than trying to go find for the money.
Okay, I'll stop to step on them. Alright, great, thank you.
Might have hit the offense, we.
Yeah. Like, if we, if we only get fixed, we could be all in here.
We might not have a choice if we apply for both, we might pick one. Usually, if we have a black and pink, so I wouldn't say for sure, but I suspect that's intended to do, is if we didn't rate all projects and say, this is like, we scored five, and this is the one, we could maybe choose that as the budget.
Well, that one's definitely priority.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Well, I have a question, interest.
Oh, I don't. Yeah.
Great. Very, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Well, unless, unless Stefan wants to jump in this ten-minute window, try to accomplish his, uh, it's code enforcement. So while he's approaching, I'm looking at pages, page fifty-nine. He had a memo here on the conservative stage of the sports club, and had one way by a road research, he's done. Done.
I drop. When did the road actually come into Zinko Town, Town Hall? By my research, March of seventy-four.
So it's a pipe of those prior to that?
Yeah. And according to resident counts, the range was in use well before the road was there.
So it was in use before it comes up divided, and parts a lot?
Yeah, I think it was the sort of thing where he just had his friends and family use his property for shooting. And you have the standard travel pit behind it, and so he's essentially safe.
Questions?
Do you want to give the, uh, the one-minute synopsis, or swell?
Yeah. Sure. I live in here.
Absolutely. So, essentially, at the time that the, the club moved to Swansea, there were no restrictions on uses in that district. It was referred to as one of the general districts. And the only restrictions on land use there pertained to highways, like, um, setbacks and structural use juxtaposition to the set highways. So, they really didn't have to go before the planning or zoning board to get approval. And we have record that after zoning regulations developed, they went forward for building permits, um, special exception from the PBA. So it seemed as though they weren't compliant with the holidays.
Essentially, they were grandfathered not to use.
Exactly.
As, as the, the use of the permit technology is, the town was aware of it, and granted, the building progress.
And that was in April, wasn't it?
And it's no more, more activity than the right back then. I mean, the, the lights that we get is that it's more, uh, more members, and it's growing. And so there's gonna be no control of that at all.
I have not received reports of increased activity or change of activity.
Yeah.
I have been there once before.
Yeah.
It seemed as though they were using the land within the timeframe that they said they're supposed to use the land, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we kind of figured that, right? You get the evidence, and then. And I can understand on the other end, you know, the people, it's, you know, I've been there on Sunday, it's just twenty-four seven, you know, and I understand they moved in, they knew there was some things there, I get it. Something, you know. Well, we needed to look, and we needed to give these people answers, and we did a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna say, do you think so?
Well, that's what I question to you, with the roads being so close, and, you know, they shoot rifles and stop this there. You know, by law, I think there's a certain distance to shooting, but I correct.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a safety ask, this is for immigrants. Check your body, have some super knowledge. They wanted to go take a look at that, and board, and see if there's any safety issues like this.
We have a, a point, that, that. We respect our lawyers.
Well, I think, I think it's not just where they want to do the, say, research, but I think you could do a certain, or. Some of the other people walking on it, whatever, that's, there's an evidence that's issued, although, that was an aspect to it.
So you've seen him downfall by him, and him take a look to see if there's any safety issues.
I'll bet he's seen it, though.
Be happy to meet with.
Billy James.
Tight and tight, and we're thinking long-term, and we're gonna help first, before we start to authorize this to leave. I just, I'd prefer to have that tightness before we even can work.
Yeah, for savings. In compliance, if I, here, yeah, if you plan to design it, it's, yeah.
But you're, you're.
Get back here.
You, you don't care that I have a range or not, and.
To, to mine now, I was told that they are, but I, I can't back that word. You were just told. Correct.
You could go on, yeah, I was like, you find that out, those problems, yeah.
The only health and safety things that I read about pertain to DES and water contamination. And just from what's in the records at Town Hall, it seems as though they're still in compliance with DES. They have a remediation plan that.
Just on go. Personally, I'd encourage you to check with legal first, before you start going on. You, you were asked to check in for the zoning aspect.
Correct.
If you were in compliance, and you determined that their use predated zone, because the judge was on at the time, and when zoning came in, and it came very clever, and I can from, you presented information that they saw permanence to the various boards, or you gave a bit of, administration gave a permanence. I think before you go on further, really check with, with legal, because you're, you're essentially potentially trespassing on personal, without cause. It's just a full call.
No, no, I, I'm here essentially.
We can go back next, not next week, but the night. I mean, that.
I'd like to see that followed up on, but because I, my concern is, something's accidentally happened, it'd be somebody on that street or something, and I don't want to be sitting in this seat and have this brought in front of me if we didn't check out the safety. Somebody, somebody gets hurt, and then, um, I'd love to see us follow through with that, and see if we can get permission to have Mike go and check the safety. So at least, at least if they're gonna do it, we can say, these, these are, you know, things that we have to address since, you know, there's people living there now. We have to make some changes, you know, for safety, right?
So if they came in after, we found that they don't use the house.
So they what?
If they built the house after the fact, if the range is already there, we got the dog, they can't use their house because of state. That's the danger.
I just disagree, I just think we should check out some details. Okay, if we, and I'm not saying to do it without checking out what they're said. I, I just think I'd like to see it, you follow through, go to law, and find out if we're legal to do it. And if we are, I think we should do it, that's all I'm saying.
Look, you could always call up a person, or a court, ask them. And do your commission.
And. I will talk to the town council.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Stefan.
I love you, Stefan.
All right, eight, six o'clock, we'll be a public here. In accordance with the article fourteen, passed at the two thousand and four annual town meeting, RSA forty-one, boom, fourteen, dash, A, was selected during the regularly scheduled meeting to hold the volume public hearings at the Hall regarding the possible acceptance by the town of a donation of approximately three point three acres to Southwestern Community Services. The land is from the parcel of twenty-eight Main Street, map one, deck lot seven. This donation is part of a boundary line adjustment approved by the planning board on August eighth, twenty twenty-four. The hearings will be held as follows, the night September twenty-fifth at six P M, and again on October ninth at six P M. But we'll say that if you have anything you want to comment on this, if you could identify yourself for the minutes, that'd be great. A little bit of public here.
Before we get to our public here, I, could I just ask one question? As I, as I read this, it appears that there's existing ordinance. We're gonna modify it as I can here.
What's the next block here?
So which one is this?
This is on the block, the landing, I opened the fire station.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun on that thing. I'm looking up a word, because I've been to do it before. Sorry, my system, so he doesn't. Well, look, it was almost an arse, so they didn't want to.
Yeah, so with that, with that opportunity, uh, so what we're talking about is actually just down the street here. Fire Station Three, which I'm once probably familiar with, right next to the Thompson Towne Bridge, is currently on a very small lot, about a third of an acre. And when we put on an addition, for the last couple of years, the back, and additional storage space, uh, because the lot was so small, the percentage of the building that covers the lot is so large, we ran into a couple little hiccups in terms of, um, some state permitting, which is what started the conversation about, it'd be really nice if we had some, you know, a little bit of breathing room, not that we'd have any plans to do anything, uh, but just to provide a little bit of breathing room. And working with our partners at Southwestern Community Services, HEVOC specifically, uh, they were, they were open to that opportunity, the project's been there long enough that some of their funding, uh, restrictions are loosened, and stuff, so that they have the ability to, um, potentially donate some land. And so that's what we're here to talk about tonight, is that donating approximately three point three acres. And here, we'll hand out, you'll see a little sketch here that shows, um, the fire station building is what's here. The existing lot, there's just that little square around it, and it's out all this riverfront, riverfrontage, and then a new line is here, so. It's really giving some river buffer, which could be nice for some hiking trails potentially down the route. Uh, there's kind of an existing parking area, it's already used, so that would be on town property. There's a drainage catchment area, that would be on town property, that went in as part of the. There's a drainage catchment area that would be on town property that went in as part of the Main Street project. And it just gives some additional flexibility around that station, so that's all this here is discussing. And the own cost to the town or some transaction costs, so they're gonna have some survey work done. And D. Drohan, who's, should be under five thousand dollars for the transaction cost.
Questions or comments? Can we know of votes of public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, another public hearing, it had ten to fourteen days, and the board has proposed within seven days. And it did go for the playing forward, down to the line adjustment for their comment on the acquisition. And when the conservation issue.
Is that okay or where is?
My closet? Yeah, well, I guess the votes is.
Just as you mentioned, beautiful piece of property for a lot, you know, along the river. Most of them.
It's a good trail.
Well, there might be some opportunities that you can bring away. It's a must.
All right, we have ten more minutes before our next public hearing, so. About zoo business, special event permit, eighty four dash one cemetery candle float four.
We have the opportunity of the cemetery sexton in our presence, and we've had some discussions. So this is a private event that obviously wants to load the cemetery's. She's vested in, and he said she's likely our cemetery trustees, so really it should go before them, so we have to look for approval from the board for use on property. And that's approved, the special grant.
We got a monkey. Wanted to speak to it. At the way. Will Josh make an appearance?
Since I made a. I'm not in real favor of item that's had assumption, but that's me. Maybe I'm old. But it just lends itself to. Hard times that people often. They would take the opportunity down, and I would assume hopefully not coming to something like this, but. I would like a lot more time to work with. It's not a big deal as far as, it's probably taking the top half of the cemetery is the important event. But like I told her, it's all good. My boss was pretty much a justice for the cemetery. I don't know if it's no fault, but. One half.
Which is for sure, I guess, right?
Six thirty, eight thirty?
Yes, that's what it says here.
Even at five thirty, it would be dark.
Say, so you're dark at six thirty, and we're kind of starting to be dark.
That's some heavy.
Might be.
About two.
About six thirty. What are the problems with the next time? Is that?
The roads.
For what?
The road to.
I mean, I'm only for for just a triple or four.
Is this, is that they march, they walk, and this or that, they walk and the that, you know what they do?
They don't go for different spots within the cemetery, you know? The fairly soon group, but. We will, you know, that would have us, this stone wall, which is not good, but they use the ground, so. It's it's cool.
And they're hoping to get people in.
We're supposed to have lights. It's a history of that tour, you know, so like that has. Stories of. Interesting. Other places are doing it, they're doing it today.
She knew why she wants to do that night.
Yeah, she found a place at midnight.
So.
And that's, and it's cool, and again, she she stresses the fact that it's scary.
Right.
And it will not, well, I'm saying she's just talking history. There's a part three, the town is, as we know it, when they had the weed, because they didn't. Back, it's going back to be the same. It's a bad tendency to explore.
Do you have a comment or question?
Somebody online is looking at the center.
See if I can unmute my microphone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, Lee. Um, hey, thanks for coming tonight. I just wanted you to let, wanted to let you know that I'm here if you have any questions. I did walk this cemetery twice this past weekend, and I feel like I do have a safe route. That would not have a tripping hazard, and I certainly understand Lee's concerns. My goal is to teach the town the history of Swansea, which is amazing. Like, we drive through the Crescent Bridge all the time, we see the name Crescent. But even though I grew up in Swansea, I never realized that he was, his son, Thomas Crescent Junior, was kidnapped by the Indians, marched off to Canada twenty miles a day. And so there's just so many interesting stories that are in our cemeteries. Revolutionary War soldiers that fought in the opening battles in at Bunker Hill. And I'd love to be able to tell those stories. I can do it in the day if you would prefer, but there are many cemeteries around the country that do it safely at night and with battery operated candlelight. It's kind of a cool effect. It's interesting to do it that way, but. Up to you guys, so. Do you have any questions for me?
Would you be interested in doing it, not like a Saturday early, the late afternoon, early evening, maybe at four?
Um, I could, um, I could. It would need to, I have a wed, I have a florist, I have a wedding on the twenty fifth, so it'd need to be the following Saturday.
So. I'll get into hunting season.
Right now, you're saying the twenty ninth and the thirtieth, which is a Tuesday, Wednesday?
So I'm saying the twenty ninth with the thirtieth as a rain date.
Okay. Yes.
And I was trying not to interfere with football games and other things that might be going on around the town on a weekend. It's kind of why I was picking a weeknight.
Very close. Here's a great comment. A lot of fun.
Motion made, seconded, authorized use of town property and approved special about thirty twenty one four dash twenty. All voters say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
So I just mentioned a slide, so we have a few minutes before the public hearing, just give a little bit of background that might answer some questions that folks have. So this has been something that the select board has been working on for better part of two years. As the, you know, bridges have been hit before and we perceive concerns, I think it was last spring or summer, the board said, well, why don't we, why don't we put cameras on them, then we can catch the people that damaged them? And I say, I don't think we can do that, and we checked with the Hampshire Municipal Association, and they said, no, we can't have cameras to monitor on, on the roads or bridges. We can have them on a building like here, but you can't have them where the traveling public is, is driving. And they said, well, let's try to change the law, and said, I don't know how that's gonna work, but we can try it. And we approached our state representatives, Barry Faulkner helped sponsor the bill, and Jennifer Rhodes helped testify in favor. And so they filed legislation to allow the installation of cover grid, cameras on the cover bridges. And in parallel, just coincidentally, other towns were also working on this issue because they were having problems with it as well. And increased, they had filed legislation to increase the fines if vehicles that were not appropriate went over the bridges, if they're too high, too heavy, or or towing. They damaged it, so it just was kind of a happy combination that they were also working on that legislation. And who had testified in favor and filed letters, Mason Thorn filed a letter as well. So we'll give her credit and sell the I P for it, and both the House, the Senate approved it, and the governor signed the legislation. So we're now able to install cameras as of September first, and we're able to increase the fines as of January first, twenty twenty five. So that's, it's a little bit timing wise clunky, which was kind of Bill's question. So what I've included in the handout, that hopefully everyone got, if not, there's probably still a few back there. There's the current ordinance, which has current watermark on it, and then there's the proposed ordinance. So other than a few kind of organizational and typo changes, really the only changes are on that second page, which is where we added in the fines and the cameras. So ironically, a lot of the feedback we've gotten is about the weight, which is three tons, which is not changing that ordinance, that consistent. And it's not something we set, it's set by the state, the State Department of Transportation, Bridge Bureau, inspects the bridges periodically, and they set the regulations regarding the posted lines. The other piece that I wanna mention briefly, especially as it relates to Crescent, is in terms of signage. Because that is a state road, the town does not control the signage on that road. And we did have Frank Littbringer from the P O T local district came in about a month ago, that was aboard, to discuss signage. And he connected us with folks in the traffic bureau, and we emailed after that meeting, hadn't heard, they emailed me back at like five o'clock today, so I haven't had a chance to read it. But we are making progress on the signage. One of the questions was yield versus stop, no yield, so we are looking into that. And we're the first town that's trying to install the bridge, install the camera aspect, which also has a signage requirement. So because we are kind of a guinea pig, there is, it is gonna take some coordinating, so. So we didn't make the September first, but we were able to install them. But we are working as quickly as possible, and the board has allocated funding for installing a camera on Crescent to start there as a traffic period. So.
We got three minutes.
Okay.
I think I covered most. It'll be six fifteen, I'll open the public here. Regarding proposed changes to town highway regulation, like I said, takes effect January first, twenty twenty five, increases comments. And authorizing use of cameras to identify vehicles that damage or propose to, it's a mail at Town Hall. Sponsoring, not going. Again, if you could identify yourself before you speak for the minutes, that would be great. Open the public here. Brian, what's the lectures?
Comment, question, statement, so do you statement, think that the cameras going up is a good idea? I'm not sure why we're doing one when we have four bridges, we just do them all. But that was the statement rhetorical, if you will. This wave is coming up at the coffee houses around town as well, because the fifteen hundred pickup truck, this crew cab's already two and a half ton empty. So the three ton limit kind of got people, even though it's been three tons for two hundred years, they're. I don't think we're in the position to go ticketing people driving through there with the pickup trucks, and I don't think that's the goal. But the in tow and R Vs and all that other stuff is. So since another officer just gave her notice and another one's about to give his notice, and we're short on cops, who put the cameras up, what are we gonna do with it? Because if we don't tick it, it's not gonna mean a darn thing to anybody.
But most of your point, I think the funding is a big issue as far as number of cameras. We aren't a bunch of gear, so next year. For years, some years of others. Could you clarify what the scope of the cameras is, because we don't have enforcement power with the cameras?
Cameras can only be used, we can only retain the data for seven days, they can only be used to identify the cause of damage. So the can't, can't be looking on there to see if overweight truck went over, it's only for the damage, we'll see the damage, we go out, we check the data on the camera, and then we are able to go. So it's not, it's, they're totally, they're separate. Like I said, it's a coincidence that the fees, a good coincidence, but they're unrelated, and we can't use the cameras for the fines for unless there's damage.
So like those, maybe you can hire a safe electronic ticketing, it's not a lot. But I believe the law also puts in there that if damage is found on the bridge, maybe that's not really visible, broken structure, structural piece. The camera could identify a heavy vehicle, maybe it did. Sure. And that, there are fines that include, the bridge has to be closed for repairs, that person's liable for it and their insurance. That also went up right over here.
Yeah, Mark Johnson, just regarding the signage, I think it's really important to direct drivers that are trying to get to the high school with a load of footsie's or something, that are from West Springfield, how to get around. I think that truck detour signage is really important so that we don't end up in the situation. I mean, you mentioned the roads are state roads, so we may have a problem posting at each entry road, there is, as if there's two or three each bridge that, you know, get people there. But I do think that that's an important thing to maybe discuss or think about.
Yeah. Who, on through the list, the Google Maps and everybody.
Oh, it's just. It's supposed to remind you.
Oh, okay. So Katrina, believe it or not, Google didn't know we had restrictions on our.
That's our, that's shots.
So now they do, and some of the other math question knows, they saw this, it said, oh, that speaks, don't have that capability, so.
Right, that speaks to what I'm saying, is that these folks come from out of town and are trying to get to somewhere on the other side of a bridge that they cannot cross. I think we need to help them before they get to that situation, have to drag back, end them up over, you know, by Matthew Road or something. And to try and help those folks not get in the situation to help us out so the bridge is on.
Yeah, certainly.
Yes, Rick Robichaud, I live right across from the fire department on thirty five Main Street, so I see the bridge all the time, I'm retired, I live right there. And some of the stuff I've seen on the bridge in going on eighteen years now has been pretty horrific as far as accidents that have happened there. And I think the biggest thing of all that should happen to these bridges is there should be a stop sign on each side. I mean, and and a warning before the stop sign, and that's gonna slow everybody down, and it's gonna stop the accidents, and then when they stop and see the sign, oh, nothing in tow. Because most of them are going thirty, forty miles an hour over the bridge all the time, and I see it day in, day out. I've watched trailers unhitched and hit cars coming in on the other side. I've watched trucks go through with trailers that have forklift that took out the top of the bridge on one side, kept going, took out the brick top of the bridge on the other side, and it's constant. I see trailers constantly going over, I see R Vs going over, big, big vehicles. And I think it's very important to have a stop sign on each, especially this one here where there's children playing, and the apartment's right behind the fire department all the time. And there's a lot of traffic going in and out there, and it's horrific sometimes. And I think our biggest asset would be to have stop signs on each side of the bridges. It would slow everybody down, slow the traffic down at twenty five miles an hour instead of thirty, and maybe we can contain a lot of the stuff that's going on.
Valerie Cox.
A Saturday again.
Valerie Cox.
Thank you.
Another problem is the people who tailgate other vehicles across the bridge, so if your vehicle is less than three tons, their vehicles maybe less than three tons, together they're over. So the tailgating is, yeah, the tailgating is a big problem.
And stop sign would take care of that.
Yes, I, Kyle Proto.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I kept it here.
Kyle Proto.
Thank you.
I, is there a clear of a.
I, is there a clear of a, the three ton? Is that the curb weight of the vehicle or the gross vehicle weight rating? Is it, I believe it's written in here as a GBRW. And that makes a significant difference on what vehicles can go across that bridge. So is this based off the curb weight or the gross vehicle weight rating?
This is what the state about it, it's that everyone's that close to.
But I mean, an empty pickup truck is under, obviously if they got a ton of pillows in the back, they're going to be over.
Yeah.
So. But that's my question, yes, because it would make a big difference.
So.
Lauren.
Hi, Yarian Johnson. So did, just to be clear, clear, you say that if a, if a camera sees a bridge, sees a vehicle go over the bridge and knock out some boards, you can't, even if you get the, see the whole thing.
That's what you can use a camera to identify the vehicle for.
You can.
Right, but it just for a vehicle being oversized or overweight. If there's no damage done on the bridge, you can't use a camera to identify the vehicle.
Gary Proto, send him your drive.
I'm sorry.
Gary Proto.
Thank you.
Send him your drive. I think one of the biggest things with a tow is the sign so small. It's this big.
I agree.
You know, and it's right at the bridge. Have further, couple more further down the road too.
No, there's one right by the, right in my property, right on the corner across from the fire department. It's a fairly good sized one, but they're covered with tree limbs and brush the same as the one coming on the California street. There's a sign there, but it's covered with brush from a tree, you can't even read it. So it's not doing anything useful.
More signage is the way to go. And I get the same question as my son on the grocery. What, where we going to curb or how we doing the grocery?
Steve Tenny, Eaton Road. Just a couple of comments about the ordinance as it's proposed. The way I read RSA 3139, which, which gives the town its, its authority for ordinances, is that's capped at a thousand dollar fine. The way we've copied the penalties from the new RSA or the revised RSA to indicate fines of $2,000, I don't think that would hold if the police department would charge it under the town ordinance. My recommendation would, would be to reword this whole ordinance and just reference the new RSA and the new penalties. Because God forbid if we wrote someone under the ordinance and they won, you wouldn't get your restitution either, it would be dropped. So.
I read it though, was it a lot of two parts? That one is for the overweight, oversized vehicle.
It is, but it's the fine if the damage impedes the flow of traffic. So I don't, I'm not sure that legally the ordinance can, can have the fine up to $2,000 like that. I think it would be cleaner to just reference the RSA in the penalty section of this new ordinance. Because then again, if it's ever changed or repealed or whatever down the road, you would have to go through this process again. And with that, because this is so much clearer and actually gives the town much better standing. If my neighbor's towing his lawn tractor to Guyet's, why do we have the tow part of it in there? If someone's using a passenger car with a small landscaping trailer, they're now responsible. You have a lot of measures that they're responsible and if they're a responsible driver, they can tow a small trailer through the bridge responsibly without having to go all through.
Now.
I'm looking at the end because that 40 W for the tree spade. Is that one man put in the dumping couple or?
That's one of the.
Yeah, and I understand, it's just that people don't, trust me, I know what they're towing. I understand the concept of why it came to be, I was a resident when it happened. But it's kind of like making rules for everybody when only one person has a problem, right? So if we have a camera where we can identify the violator and charge that person and get our restitution back, maybe it's time to look at that for the responsible drivers in town. But so I would, I would reword the whole penalty section and just reference the RSA. I think it's cleaner, I think it's easier for the police department on whether they want to use the ordinance or the RSA to charge. And it's, it's just cleaner because most of our town ordinances are, are $50 or $100 anyway. Kind of goes out of our norms of our, our other ordinances that we have in town. So it's just my two cents, thank you.
Nothing in tow?
I did want to speak to this because that's 18 years working both works. Those bridges are hit every year, both of the times, the three of them. The one, slightly reduced, which is a bridge on steroids built in 2001, built with 14 foot height, which the state then turned to 13 eight. That's the state. And walkers onto the side timber, you cannot get to the side of the bridge unless you get something hanging out. That bridge doesn't get hit nearly at all. I say nearly because if I look at that, I'd say somebody went through in the back home and hit the tops. Why? I don't know. But the other three bridges, in 18 years of me doing public works, all three of them, one portal was destroyed by either a tree spade, a problem of a drunk driver, Tom Kesson. Oddly, there was a drunk driver to the one Thompson that took the whole side out of it. They left that, so. We're talking 14 to 16,000 dollars worth of damage to a bridge in that time. Now probably 25, 30. So if we can hold them accountable, at least that's a start. But boy, I mean, I was taught in driver's head, if you had an accident, you had to stop or report it. What is it when it's hitting a bridge, taking the roof off, you know, off the proper vehicle and saying, oh jeez, let's get out of here before the fine begins. I don't understand it. Why should we have to do that? We have to.
Thank you. Just me.
I disagree with the removing of the nothing in tow. Accidents happen to great drivers all the time. And it opens, as you said, it opens up the bridges to more damage possibilities, even by just a simple accident, you never know what's going to happen. Also, a lot of people don't realize the additional weight they're carrying when they are towing equipment or even. If it was the only way to get out of town, that would be one thing, but it's not. There are multiple ways out of town that do not involve a bridge.
Mark Johnson, sponsoring Lake Road, just regarding the signage again, because that's what I do. Letter height is a math. You can see a certain height letter from a certain distance. And there's a reason the stop sign doesn't say, take your foot off the accelerator and put it on the brake. It just says stop, because too much, nobody's going to read. So the design of the signs, I think, is important. Letter height is important. It's so that people can, it speaks to people as they approach it. And hopefully, like I said before, we'll have detour signs so that doesn't have to happen. That's all. And I would donate my time to help design signs if it wasn't a state, if it's not a state issue, I'd be happy to do that.
Kyle Proto again. Lee was saying that in 18 years of the L I accidents, I lived within a mile of the Crescent Bridge for 30 plus years of my life, drive over it multiple times a day. Now I live between the Thompson Crescent Bridge. Has there ever been any thought of just closing them and making them historical sites? There's adequate parking lots for people to park and enjoy the bridge. Just open the best greens and bicycles. And then that would eliminate the people overweight on it, that would eliminate any of that. If you're gonna, because if you're going to impose $500 fines for a weight limit to over half the registered cars in town, you might even think about closing anything. It'd be easier for the fire department. Well, I'm just saying, like in the article, it says town vehicles are allowed to go over town pickups, but my pickup's not. Is that because the town pickup weighs less than my pickup or? I don't know, who's asking the question? Or because the fire truck gets lights on last week?
I would say that the three ton limit, you know, what that comes into that is that over time, you know, if it was five ton, the engineer's saying that over time, constant fogged on traffic would, you know, be detrimental to the bridge. And so they lowered the three, I'm just saying, throwing out numbers. So I think that might be the issue with it. Do you have maintenance vehicles, you know?
Well, I mean, not insane, but three days a week out there going to the Crescent Bridge on the way home. Three days a week here and two today, it's on the bridge at the same time. So that's the same problem, right? We're fixing that.
You brought up about someone hitting a bridge, just keep down the home. We had an incident the other night too. Can you explain to me what happened the other night with that truck that they hit the bridge? And the officer went to his home, right?
Part of the RV.
I don't, this one right here, this is the other night. And somebody followed the guy.
Yeah, from North Carolina. He was identified, we went and located him. He was confused about where he was going, was following GPS. And obviously paying more attention to GPS than signage. And unfortunately he did it to the bridge.
So on that incident now, do we, is there any, do we sign him, do we say?
Yes, he was, she was secationed and it was.
You have to pay a secation.
That insurance, that's, that's what we do now. So he'll end up paying for that damage. Insurance company, pay some insurance company.
I just wanted to know what we'll do now. So Lee, I just wanted to bring up again, you know, the accident, the biggest one that happened, I think on this bridge and said, well, you, you know, I remember that one well because I think the camera is a great idea. When that accident happened, I was standing on the front lawn, the guy drove through the pickup truck with a big trailer on the back and had a forklift that was 11 feet high, the part of the forklift. He took out the front part of the bridge, kept going, took out the other side of the bridge and he was going to keep going. I jumped in my pickup truck and drove over all of that wood to catch him and cut him off on the road that goes to the right there, whatever his name was. Yeah, Winchester, yeah, that Winchester road. And I cut him off and I had already had a state trooper on the phone talking to him. And he happened to be coming the other way and met me right there where I cut him off. Otherwise that guy would have been gone and nobody would have ever known what happened to the bridge or who did it.
Took out the whole.
Yeah, he took out both gable ends on the bridge, but and some timbers up top too. But I, I think it's a real important thing to have the cameras and also stop signs. That's, that's my biggest, biggest thing right there, so.
I would say.
Anytime we have. That just. Couple of, you know, it's, it's possible. When I first started, if you're old, you remember belt spasm. Belt spasm looked at the hill. And you blew our mind of the bears on the bridge. He had boards all painted on the bridge. He come down and told me, he said, who sits the bridge? They had to fix it. But that, that was another issue too. Because when that bridge was rebuilt in 95, they did the typical bridge course in the bridge, it was not all the way out to the ledge. So if you moved over, if there are tires run down, once the tires run down off the, the bridge strips, you went into the side of the bridge, tore out the ones that had so. When we built the floor, we built the floor further out so you can't do it on. And that's the way the Crescent Bridge, they did, we did that. It used to be when I grew up, three foot strips for your tires, that's it. But also the height, you check the chair to the number, now it's all the way across, you don't fall on.
I was also considering, like, there, there should be an informational aspect to this as well because a lot of people don't know how much their vehicle weighs. A lot of people don't realize how tall their vehicles may be or what they have in their vehicles may be. So I'm seeing other bridges in other states where they have like maybe a safety bar before you get, if you hit this bar, you can't go through the bridge. Or even just like flags that come down. So and then there's some type of system where you can know if you don't clear that, you can't continue on. And the other thing is, is maybe an informational session on a Saturday or a Sunday. You know, come find out how much your vehicle weighs. You know, we can get a vehicle weight machine and it's just information for people so that they know. It takes out the question part.
You can try to under registration. Always use the.
The GBRW is on your registration.
Right, that's the point.
See, I don't know that.
The curb weight of your vehicles on the inside of your driver's side door.
Sure, yeah.
Yes, Lisa Thorn, so it's. So a couple of things. From Rusty, I'm very much against taking down the signs that say nothing in tow because one of the things we haven't talked about is the pedestrians that are on the bridge. And I don't know about you, but I've gone through that bridge walking. When a truck comes through with a pontoon boat on the trailer, not fun. So I think taking down any signs about anything in tow is, we need to keep those signs up. My other question is, and maybe clarify this for me. Did I understand correctly that we cannot use the cameras to enforce the weight? Okay.
Unless there's change.
Unless there's change. So repeated use day by day by day, this causing damage. What is the plan to enforce the weight? If we can't use the cameras to do it, what's the plan?
Who's our catch people in fight?
When are they doing that? Because I have cameras, I don't see the police stopping anybody for that heavy trucks. And now last Friday night at eight minutes of five o'clock, the cars pulled up in front of my house, it was a Swansea police cruiser. He was stopped in traffic, waiting for people to come across the bridge very lightly. Right behind him was an oversized truck pulling a giant trailer, an equipment trailer. I'm going to give him the benefit of the doubt and say he stopped him when they opened up to the other side because I couldn't see. But I want to know, are they doing anything? Are they instructing to do it? What good are the cameras if we're not enforcing it?
Well, we do have officers down there and we are enforcing it. Obviously when they're stationed down there, people take off to their roots.
When they're stationed down there, you have them on the other end. You have them by the stop sign at Matthews Road. We need to have them on causeway.
I'll refer to.
The day of the last town wide guard siege, we had an officer, somebody was on causeway. They were there maybe 10 minutes. Someone went across the bridge with a truck towing a boat. They went after them, they stopped them. That person was under suspension at Massachusetts. So the truck got towed and the trailer got towed.
Unfortunately, probably took the officer out of enforcement detail for a lot. Well, it interferes paperwork, right?
It interferes paperwork, but I guess my point is you're going to see it on this side of the bridge. The other side of the bridge, you're just getting people who are stopping at the stop or not stopping at the stop sign at Matthews Road.
I think one thing we need to do is start forcing the weight limit on the bridge is figure out what that weight means for it. Because there's many vehicles that the GBRW is over three tons, but the curb weight is under a ton. So I guess we got to figure out what weight we're going to go with, where we can start to force. So I guess we gotta figure out what weight we're gonna go with, before we start forcing.
I'd also say that it's set by the state, so if, I would say the vehicle at the time, so if it's a half ton, or I don't even want to say half ton, a small Toyota or Ranger pickup truck, and you put two tons of batteries in the back of the thing, and you can see it going down the road, it's a rear bumper dragging. That would be an incentive to the officer to say, that's overweight, even though the registration and the VIN tag says what the weight is. Well, I agree, it's over six ton, or three tons on the bridge, so.
But here, it says that you're helping. That's why I'm wondering, is, is, is this gonna be due to that? I'm sure the officer's gonna get the same question, they're not gonna want, or I think he can have answers. So it'd be good to have them have clarified information before they start.
So, just, just for note, there's not a municipal or town police agency in the state of New Hampshire that's equipped to, to weigh trucks or cars, or anything like that. The DOT, or the Division of State Police, in their truck unit will, but that's for commercial vehicles. So, uh, you're kinda asking the police department to do something that's almost impossible for them. And have it stand up legally. They can stop them and give them a warning, but if someone was to challenge a ticket given by one of the chief's officers for being overweight, they're gonna have no leg to stand on. Because you said he had a load of gravel in the back of his three-quarter ton pickup. It's just not feasible, and it's too much to ask of them. And to make them certified to do it would be a lot more money and a lot more training than I think the town people would be willing to spend for a couple tickets a year on the covered bridges. So, um, the simplest way to do that is while you have the ordinance open, if you really want to tackle it, and you're gonna have to have another public hearing, is to make those bridges passenger car only. And it's simple as that. If they're registered commercially, then they get a ticket. Otherwise, if they're registered as a passenger vehicle, there's nothing else you can do about it. So, um, it's kinda unfair to bash the police department here when they don't have the mechanisms to enforce what you're asking them to enforce.
I guess they are listed as passenger cars only, except for the sleep bridge.
Wow, the crashers are more bigger than us.
Well, and I think, like, it's a passenger registered vehicle, it's like for us, which, you know, my issue, one time dump for us, I think it would really be okay.
Right, right.
Sorry?
Um, sorry, Johnson, I just have a quick question. I see the Schwanz truck, I've seen that go over the bridge many times. So if I see it going over the bridge, and I take a picture of it, and it's license plate number and the date and all that, can I do anything with it?
I would refer to the chief, but I would say, unless there's damage.
If there's damage?
Maybe.
There was a tractor trailer trying to come over this one here about three months ago. And I thought, maybe bad.
I could round out many businesses here, just from seeing the trucks that have gone over it daily. And, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and do that, but there's some businesses in town that use it daily with big trucks.
Sell the businesses.
What's that?
Sell the businesses.
Can you speak to that, though, chief? If someone sends you, alright, I've got a picture of this truck that, you know, say it's dumpster, it's clearly oversized, overweight, and it's halfway across the bridge. If they send that to you, can you do anything with that picture in terms of enforcement?
Well, obviously, the officer didn't observe the violation. So he needed a deficit, but we definitely follow up. Let's feed the company and the operator who's driving the vehicle.
Lisa Lauren, again, okay, so on the average, probably 10 to 15 commercial vehicles a day show up on my cameras. So should I start sending those pictures? Because it's every day, and a lot of them are locals. Okay?
You crashed my email, you sent them to me, so.
I know, I crashed everybody's email, but, you know, it's not a couple ticket a day issue. It's multiple, and they're big, you know? Certain company from town that delivers dumpsters takes their truck through the bridge with a dumpster on the other way, you know? But no one does it. And I guess my other question is, can we ask for help from the state jail?
We did.
Really exciting issue.
That was on about a month ago.
No, no, I mean the enforcement.
I don't think.
Because of the scales.
I don't think DOT doesn't enforce that. Just local districts. Well, I notified the Troop C, and they, we got troops there a couple occasions, but I mean, definitely have to have a commercial unit with scales to try to enforce that.
So we have a town ordinance, the sheriff's department. Write a ticket, so, based on that town ordinance.
Brian?
No, so, if anyone hearing is any terms, really, is cars, passenger cars and pickup trucks that are registered as passenger cars, which would be everything, the pickup trucks. Those aren't the concern, those aren't the issue, and we really aren't terribly concerned about them, even if they're towing something small, if they're not causing damage. Right? If they cause damage, that's when we're gonna click into these camera things and start doing some, potentially writing some tickets.
I think we were mentioning, so you said, is that like, the only thing we can use the camera stores for damage?
That's what I just said. So that's the only real change. I mean, this isn't worded that way. But hearing the people talk, the only real concern people are saying, I think, is passenger cars and pickup trucks. If Sally, what Joe wants to go through there with her utility trailer with a bag of leaves on it, it's been one lane, nothing in tow for decades. This isn't anything new.
The fine area, so.
Right, but I think what we're hearing is, they're not gonna go and sit there and find people that are going over over limit. If there's damage and there's a reason to get called there, that's a different story.
Well, something we discussed, somebody who's very able to go person or messages that was under suspension.
Yeah, they have to take the officer out. I think to dispose of that situation.
I understand. What even drives the point, verb, is that they're not gonna be tagging us or riding our car across there with a bag of trash, because it's what weighs 6200 pounds, they have no way to know it, and the ticket never holds up in the first place. So this is really about damage. Well, then that's a different conversation.
Well, I don't know, just the danger part, let alone, um, a month and a half ago, a truck coming over here with the trailer on it, got to the end of the bridge, there were two cars waiting up in front of our houses, right in front of the fire department, the trailer unhitched from the truck when it got to this side of the bridge and hit the two cars on the other side of the bridge. So I think we need to really try and enforce the in tow. I've seen too many accidents that it's done damage like that. There was another one where a guy had a trailer on the back of his truck, and a car was halfway through the bridge. He went through and kept going through and took out the whole side of the lady's car, wiped it out completely, and damaged the bridge at the same time. So, the in tow is a big concern, as far as I'm concerned.
Oh, yes.
It's a very big concern, it has to be addressed.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying that in tow is not the new thing. We've been dealing with this for decades, because it's been the law for decades.
Uh, two things, Mark Johnson. Uh, what's your schedule with Damon Thompson?
Weather permitting, it's open to be done this week.
Oh, okay, great, because I'm gonna try and handle the detour thing. Well, if we're not helping these guys, the, I say guys, if we're not helping these drivers avoid these bridges with appropriate signage at the entry roads, there's entries to all these bridges, there's only so many ways you can get to them. And if the signage were placed appropriately, that said, fines up to 1,000, as Steve was saying, or 2,000, whatever the jargon is, go this way, couldn't get on, we need to help the drivers not get in that situation. And I think that that would minimize it at least. And have those to have the detour route, uh, be, uh, explain what type of vehicles having at that, at that stage, as well as at the bridge. You know, so that you're having, you know, no big box things, no, whatever, you can even have cartoon, not cartoons, but still a lot of pictures, anything. But I think the detour signage is extremely important. That's just my take on it.
You know, Mark, I think Mark has unbelievable ideas here. I think that's a key thing. I think that's extremely key. But I also think this didn't happen overnight. This has been happening for too many years and nothing being done. So now, everybody in town just knows, you can go over that, don't mind the sign. And here's the problem here, we've never done nothing for 10, 15, 20 years. Then we're gonna have to start somewhere, and I think we have to attack it aggressively, and we have to pull people over, and we have to say, even if we have to hire someone, stand there between two weeks and say, no more going over the bridge, no more. And get it out there into the public, then, no more going over the bridge with tow. We've done it, we allowed it too long, and we grew our own monster. We have a monster now because we let it happen, it's simple. That's what I'm gonna, but I think Mark's ideas is, don't let the people get in front of it and say, oh shit, how'd I get here? Let them take the right or the left before then, so they go around it. I think you got a great ideas, and the stop sign, I think, is great, too.
Well, so are the Walmart readers, I mean, we can have our own cool Walmart readers, you know, that are all here going, hey, no, yep, nope, yep.
That's right, and I think we have to figure something out, we have to get it out into the town where everybody's aware of it now. They're busting everybody for going over the bridge. We're stopping it. Enough is enough now.
So the word gets out, didn't it?
The word gets out, right, and then it gets to talk in the town, oh, Joe went over there.
Just like, do you speak through Troy? Nope, you know?
Yeah, that's no, you don't do that.
Right, you know?
That's no, you don't do that.
You know, speak through Troy.
Why?
You know, right.
That's right, I knew that when I first moved here, everybody told me.
So, Jim, I think I know, is my question for asking, is that, how did you get here?
How did I get here?
Did you come across the Thompson Bridge? Is your truck over 6200 pounds?
I just found out.
That's my question, right. So, I think that's the box, I think that's the biggest issue is, am I gonna get a $500 ticket for driving my pickup truck to Market Square?
That's a good question.
Or do I gotta go all the way around town?
But I thought Steve answered that with the passenger vehicles thing, right? Steve, it's not like a, if your truck is a passenger, it's all.
But it's over three tons.
That's.
And I was playing schematics here, because we're talking about loads on trucks, right? We all know, the real, the real damage to the bridge and why the weight limits are there are for, you know, the one-ton dumps that are being used commercially for landscaping or small deliveries or whatever. That's really the focus, and that's, that's what's gonna hurt the weight-wise. So it's kinda playing games with, as far as if I put a load of gravel in my truck, or a ton of pallets in my truck. You know, that's, that's not who you're looking for. And I would say, before you, before you have the police officers sit there, who, we all know, and it was talked about when I walked in the door, are already short-staffed, and they're answering calls. And they have the minimum deployment issues and everything else. Get the signs up first, you know? What good is the education thing if, if we don't have a way to direct the people around it? So, the signage is a great idea. And then if you want, I would suggest in an overtime fashion, if, if the chief's guys aren't already burnt out from covering shifts, put them out there on extra details. But, you know, I would take into consideration, there's a lot of other stuff going around in this town. If you just look at the log once in a while, sometimes being overweight or having, towing a landscaping trailer through the bridge isn't what's important, so.
Does it have to be a police officer?
Just the same thing.
Can you use a, so we use a security, somebody out there, could, is that possible, Steve or Joe? Would you answer that?
I'll do that.
Could we put somebody out there just to not get tickets? I'll go and say, hey, don't, we're gonna, you can't do that, can't come over here with that.
So what about a big stop sign in your hand to go out and put the stop?
Well, I had traffic in my pocket, it was speeding traffic, and I hired a security company, and they parked their vehicle, and I paid for three months, and I stopped all the speedies in it, because I sat the security down there, and he drove to the house, and he walked up and said, you just came in here too fast, you can't do that no more. I'm just wondering, could we do similar to something like that?
Well, I'd have to see the proposal, have to see all the elements of how we want to do that. So you have a lot of liability issues. So we gotta approach it, send you that's, you know, appropriate, I think, then.
I just wanted we to get around it some other way, because I, I agree with Steve, I know how shocked into we are, and I know it's hard to just put a policeman there all day at night, that's, but I really feel that's where we're at now. I mean, we gotta let the town know, we gotta get it out there.
Put a trap, we're on the bridge.
Set way aside, they go through them.
Brian, I say, so I had a number of years ago, people go to the e-ticket cameras, and the taxpayers overwhelmingly shut it down, didn't even have a chance. So e-ticket cameras are allowed in the state of New Hampshire. So we had to change the law to identify a vehicle, but allow the police to identify a vehicle with this camera. And the only, and the reason we did it, to add covered bridges, was because af, I think after 9/11, Homeland Security put cameras on the major overpasses and bridges for DOT, the interstate stuff. So, that's why we added bridges, I don't believe, they can't, they can't, I think, state, you can draw do plain recognition, right? There's e-ticket, there's no camera, the tickets, camera e-tickets? Add a snoring.
I've done layco, Steve, and it's real important, the whole point of it is to educate people. And you have to be inoffensive, unaggressive, not in your face, you know, you have to add, just, it's just to inform people. And why it's important, and even if you did, and it pays like $10 an hour, and even if it's temporary, it might be a nice idea to educate people that way. You know, by saying, just trying to help people redirect themselves when they're towing. You know, so when you see someone towing something, you know, it's just a fog, works for the boats.
What authority did you have?
No, no, it's just, but at the base, it's not the police doing it, it's giving them information. And then, you know, you shoot the tires into a car.
Lisa?
Uh, I appreciate that the police have a lot of other things to do, other than monitoring all the trucks on the bridge. Um, to bring it back to the stop sign, signage issue, there really should be a stop sign on, on both sides of that Preston Bridge. Because now we've got, and, and if you don't live here, you don't see this on a daily basis, but what happens is, someone will yield, like they're supposed to. Someone else will come up behind them and start screaming and swearing at them, because they're yielding. And someone else back here will pull out and around, and now you've got two trying to go through the bridge. Because they thought they yielded too long. So there's that going on, because everyone is in such a hurry, and no one's patient. And, the police chief, can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was an incident a couple months ago, that someone flashed a gun at someone else, because they yielded to traffic. So it's not just a little issue.
That's really a issue.
Yeah, it is.
That bothered a whole bigger.
The signs, those got off a few times. Those are not our signs.
I understand.
Put them in. And we, we talked, I don't know, I think you were here, I thought you were here, when we talked to Frank Londonberger, brought up. We brought it up, and we hoped that it would have been better, either have no signs or two stop signs. And he spoke in favor of the yield. And we used a similar context, the judicious who have some gun part, but, but the other, what does happen from a practical standpoint, is the person yielding doesn't realize they don't need to yield, because the other side has a stop sign. So we did bring it up, but we don't have the jurisdiction hold that, other than go to the traffic bureau and make recommendations.
I will say that the state police are honored and people from town down that road as well, because I have them happily followed me from high school to my grandmother's house, which is short of the bridge. And he was very disappointed when I backed my driver. into my mother. He's like, oh, we're down there with your tickets. They are monitoring it.
Yes, Rick, I was sure against it. Sort of my understanding is the state would have to put the stop signs and stuff.
Any signage, of course.
So we'd have to adjust what's going on with the state.
Well, we have the opportunity to make a presentation or request of the traffic bureau. And then it would filter down to, to the local D O T. It's just a multi-layered process. And we, we talked about lit signs for speeding and, and all of that. And it's just, it's just a multi-layered process that we have to go through with no guarantee that it will be successful. We're hopeful that we'll be able to post the signs for the cameras. But again, it's for the, for the Crescent Bridge because it's a state road.
Well, returning to the detour sign question. So the state would have to authorize, if we put signs up here by the church to head down to Deman Thompson Road if you're driving anything that was not compliant, that has to be authorized by the state?
This would be a power.
This would be, oh, okay. So it's only on, only on state roads?
Yeah.
So can I put some stop signs down this bridge?
Maybe a drop bar. It's worked already well.
Forty years I've been here, the no stop signs seem to be more respectful at this bridge than, than the Crescent Bridge. But, but I think our point to Frank was whatever's on one side should be on the other.
You know, we're not bringing up, too, by putting these cameras up, that might deter people. That might be like, oh, they got cameras now. So that might solve some of our problems in itself. Not just for damage, you know, because now people are gonna be aware. They put cameras here. So these guys that are towing might, that might help the whole problem a lot, just by doing.
You know what, what you're saying, we could put dummy cameras on the rest of it. All by, you know.
No, but if we did.
With the rest of it, same sign.
No, I, I would push it if we, we saw it, I would push it. And I think Bill would slide on the same page. We could find the money to see if we can get them all camera. Because I think cameras are, Bill says we can get a sign. And Bill says cameras, no, you're talking about.
We have.
Yeah, so we put the sign on cameras now. I think it's gonna slow down speeders, towers, everything overweight, with good signage, cameras. I think we're gonna put a dent in it.
The reason that we focused on Crescent was because it was the, the area with the most incidents and, and the costs. And the most substantial, the most trafficked. But we will go, go through the budget across this with regard to the other, which is an excellent match with that earlier for, for next.
In our IT provider, we only do one because it is kind of experimental.
All right, we're gonna just mention that.
Yeah, we plan to.
Has anybody approached the D O T? Because I believe it's still in front of our wall. That's still state road. Has anybody approached the D O T about putting a sign there? Or even turn it down so it's crossroad? Or track trailers coming out there? That's right.
That's what I'm saying.
And you trade, it's not true.
We had them in here two weeks ago.
Yeah, I just asked them to.
Yeah, but I was talking about, tell them what Mark said.
No, we were talking about putting some signs away so that.
We did.
People might leave the deck, alternate routes.
I think there is a slot on that corner, at my house, through the heights line, that catches the smart light.
They're alive.
And it'll stop. And I saw one yesterday, there, yeah, it's not. Most of them are home down through. And you wanna see the fun, the Canadians and all the power guys down here, strong rubbish. That's the best route getting back to the public service. All by my house. All by, all by the number, those guys in key.
So we haven't notified the online mapping. I was saying earlier that Google now knows there's restrictions on those roads. But some of the other map quest and whatnots don't have.
Did you say that it is on Google and MapQuest now?
Google.
We've notified.
Yeah. Google said that there were no restrictions on there. Road to the Swansea. So we put them on. You want a covered bridge, so.
Oh, that's cool. That's how long it's gonna take for them to get it off.
If people look up one time to go to Home Depot, then they don't look again, right? Because they, they know, now they know. About thirty-two, they're like, fuck the roofs.
Good public hearing? We're working on it. Thank you for your input.
Lot of good stuff. That was, that was so worth it. Mark, Frank, everybody that put in input. I thought you guys had a lot of good ideas. You and Mike, hey, it was a great idea. So this is a good, good hearing.
And nobody asks a question of what the state's gonna do with the fund. It's good.
Well, the state's gonna do a lot of it.
It's a very awesome life.
We get some money, so be careful going home.
I'm just saying, we would think, fine.
I thought that was just for the animals.
This is the town market. That's how you're gonna write the ticket, right?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jim.
You know, out the man, you would say, you take possession of a vehicle.
I'm bringing money.
You're gonna see, and like, you're gonna bring your. So we're not, are we on both?
Okay.
Look at it, and then bring it back.
Table work until on government. They want to look at some illegal.
All right. So the new business up here being for West Swansea Water Company, action items, and safe West Swansea committee charter?
Yeah.
Kind of all together?
Back to date, of course. So Ben Dray, Underwood Engineers and I are meeting with Rick Strang from Department of Environmental Services. And it's a week or so ago. He was, he wanted to make sure we knew about the kind of award, whether in terms of the low interest loan, forty percent principal forgiveness, everything mentioned with reviews. Basically, to be clear, that if we're not going to go over that project, the state would plan to help give those funds for the project. So we wanted to kind of make sure we had some of these items listed here on radar. I told them that we weren't in a committee. And this is one of the major things that are being viewed. So it was, it was positive, but it's, it's getting late early at some points. So we want to make sure we have these items clear and make sure I'm aware of the board's current consensus of the direction we're going. So, so some of the items we had, that they had on here was just consensus that we are proceeding with a warrant, open this potentially, again, obviously, find out motivation, which always changes mine. But, but that's still apparent. He, he recommended, that's the advice, be don't want to get the warrant approved and then have the company say, oh, no, we actually think it's worth some new value. So he mentioned having a purchase sale, great, good word of counsel on the plumber, regarding the sale of the company. We showed we understand the prices. And that was clearly helpful. One of the questions was, well, major capital assets would be a storage tank. And he's wondering, well, we know either generally or specifically, where would you want to look at? Underwood recommended either up on Leonard Farm Road or on, on Christian Hill Road to try to get that for the storage tank. Again, I think that's something we're hoping that the committee is gonna look at. But he said, now, again, you don't want to get this approved unless I don't, you know, any landowners. And you don't have any place to put the storage tank. So he mentioned this committee. And then, well, not necessarily something he suggested, but that I came up with was coming up with a preliminary agreement with the current operator, which is spoken by heating. And we don't want the keys to turn over. We bought the system and then, all right, they disappeared. Now, congratulations, you're running the water company. So I think they're doing a fine job. See if we can get a agreement with them. They continue to operate it. So threw a lot of information out. I just want to make sure, you know, we have about three months until the end of the year. Make sure we're on the foot direction we're going on.
I definitely think it's a light path. We, we have potential difficulties if the system goes down with all the people that are on it, especially some of the larger multi-party facilities. We've done a lot of work underwood and that's, and that's small work. It tells how this is supposed to be to happen. And if, if we're looking at long-term growth for Swansea, this is where it's gonna happen. This is where our best land is. So we, my opinion, we need to continue to grow the infrastructure, making it possible.
We're talking about the specifics that we talked about a week ago. The water system.
Correct.
I just was a little behind on that. So, and so I think this must be a long time.
Ten years off on a face, sir.
Really?
That's not a long story.
Twenty minutes.
How long, how long discussion has been about the West?
Oh, yeah.
Twenty minutes.
What is it? Would it just wells? Would it, wells?
They have a pressure tank. Somebody might have in their basement. Air pressure keeps water pressure, basically. When somebody uses them, we're looking at taking over the system, putting it in an elevated tank so that even if the power goes out, the gravity will feed fire corrections.
But what kind of wells are they available? Drill wells if we're working on that? They drill it.
Right.
They grab gravel, like maybe eighty feet close to it, that they're using now side by side, or eighty feet deep gravel pad. They're doing huge air down there. Big wash before you run in, in some of the wells down there. And that is a problem out there.
It's the largest, it's thirty-five minute area.
There's the largest aquifer.
Yeah, I think it actually goes up to me. It's, it's pretty bad. It's nice. Endless water.
Have good water.
And then there's the third one.
There's a third well, that was bigger one. That was inside hundred. You just, yeah, I want to show, not what I can.
But what was the problem with the building by there that about it just needed on water? Pressure? Was it because of pressure that the new apartments in Silicon Meadows?
Capacity, storage.
Storage, cats, they let them go on there.
Yeah. This is storage capacity for the size of the ten to half, I think five thousand gallon there. To add on more, I think the state requires would be more large storage for another one.
Oh, that's a problem. Because that's, I thought it was, I thought it was a water thing. It has nothing to do with that. So I guess.
Remember when they ran the hell out of the water? Even more, they had, they had seven die pedals down there and four trucks going into the pedals there. Full blast, all of them. It's all red finished downstairs, which washed the floor off. Wow. Lot of water.
Which I think of looking at water storage tank up high in the top and the gra, you've got that full and then that gravity feet is down below it. There is.
Well, it's a pump up to it. Yeah, like on that side of the river or this side of the river, then on this side of the river. This is more here, this side here.
Maybe the Italian, California, Brooklyn, Staben over there, they're a big chunk of water. You know what I mean? You know, you take it on, that would be good. The whole area, those condos, come out of the.
State consensus?
Yeah, consensus is one.
Yeah, state ahead, most state ahead.
Very good. That's what I thought. Just take a shot in that.
Right.
Yep, exactly. Got that consensus right.
I know.
Perfect. Yeah, so, and then discussed, again, we talked about, about creating capable account, the possible creation of a TIF district, financing this district in this area. But one of the projects, not the only one, but one of the projects being related to this for the water community. So I've listed what I think are questions they should consider to work with the rest of the staff. The practice thing, or I think the hot here, the business priority employee, that would be helpful. I also listed some of the first, most of which I've talked to, he's still living himself, yes. He is still in some places. Yeah, so he's not a resident, but TIF districts, especially once the actual district is created, there's, there would be a TIF advisory committee for this, for the set of drive. And you can have non-also, it's a long, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of.
Yeah, because I lost those things.
I think it's a great book.
Looking at their experience there.
Mr. Gump, I was excited to read this.
Hey, I didn't know you guys did that. It's a lot of graduate.
Graduate.
He's lazy so much.
He picked a guy that didn't have a shot.
Make a motion on this, right?
Teach me.
I can't, no, I don't have.
Go ahead.
Say, motion made, second hit, create the West Swansea financing finance committee that's over mine and, of the waiver.
Hi.
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 Yeah, three hours.
Very good. Scott was looking for another committee.
That included the charge.
Who, 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 no, that's what I said, you were looking for another.
I didn't see it.
Listen.
Sit in there.
Isn't this package?
I didn't see that.
Well, you have it, you got the candy?
I have three.
See, George. I have the MS four thirty-four, David Revenus, this is okay. She does a Fuji opportunity in Mr. Tessa. So we got, here I went throughout the year, MS forms, it was most service forms. And so like when we have a budget drafted, let's go from accounting, you have to fill out an MS, that's six, three sets. And after it gets voted, two, three, two. So we have, we, we know what these are because they're part of our normal cycle. But, so we had the budget apps, obviously, earlier this year. And then, so this time here, when we get ready to set the tax rate, we have the MS one, which is the summary of all the value, tally assessed value. So based on, you know, gave a revaluation this year. So the MS one is not finished yet. But the other piece is we can't, can't change your budget. The budget is approved by the voters, there's no changing unless you have, especially in general case. But every year they get, the state gives you an opportunity, at this time here, to update revenues if you want to. So maybe the state revenues came in much higher than we expected. So usually we don't do too much adjustment at this point, but we have an opportunity. So this is kind of the first checking with the board about where the revenues are looking. And we talked about the revenues for mid-year point. So this is just kind of, we get into fall, we get close to the tax rate, great setting. Got some estimates based on what we were projecting, based on budget. But with the MS one changing with the revow, we know the tax rates are gonna change. Normally we'd be saying, oh, it's probably gonna be about this, but we really don't know with the revenue. But so just, so this is an opportunity if we wanted to change the revenues, I think for the most part we can stay. It's just kind of your preview that the tax rate is coming.
Yeah.
So the viewing schedule?
Mr. Hello.
I told you, I'd review it and send you any questions we have.
So your cam shop is sixteen?
It's scheduled, okay.
Yeah. What is the deal of an H and A?
It is at the center of the green shed. That might be a good one. I built a thirty and the thirty-first, and the day even spent, it was not, it's definitely, you were going to, it gave, each couple of, it's done. Just some blocks and stuff, we're looking at the schedule, we're communicating that, and maybe I can see problems with that. Tell them.
He's teaching.
Well, there.
We're gonna buy down recreation, yes. Is the value, we're just discussing the concept.
We can.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. Basically, the concept was, we've had a few members resign, which is good, just be more successful as like a front, as a volunteer association versus like a committee that, you know, asking about being a parent. So not really oversight committees, all the community, like a support committee, so function better just as a front, so.
So that was kind of. How many people left on?
We have two.
Only two?
Is that because we didn't pay attention? We added people on, if she didn't ask for them, just like people sort of.
It's a combination factor, so we did have two, two resigned, so at the same time, was suffering. Because she was happy, she was something, she's physical, keen. So I think one of them certainly, I don't know, maybe since the start, so.
Had a lot of issues, but has resolved them since, Richardson Park is all the, ground field. But I would, the only thing I didn't see in that is maybe we should update the charge to, say, recreation for all ages. Maybe lift some seniors to provide some, as far as senior recreation. Just to make those gear ready for kids.
Well, at that point, we were just trying to, you know, kids program, and then started thinking a lot, like, yeah, we're just a camp, so. Probably a victim of the success of that.
Yeah.
The park next to the block here, so.
You feel confident enough people that can handle this order, this sort of programming. And organization structure to ensure.
Because I wouldn't say, because she did that, I wouldn't want to speak for her.
You feel comfortable with that?
I wouldn't want to speak for her.
I'm asking you.
I feel comfortable, it's fair. I'm not gonna be there, I'm saying, I'm gonna start, scare girls before the, right, and before that, so. She seems to have a pretty good manner.
Have you been a street update?
I think we've had enough.
So good, those donuts, no? Public input?
I think we had a lot of public inputs.
We had a lot, I think we had a lot.
We have any non-publics?
Yes. Start with, say, start with A for initial promotion compensation. Here, I think it's the top of, the customer.